The mayor would like to call to order the regular city council meeting for 7:00 PM Tuesday, September 21 of 2021, the city council chambers at 201 East Nash Street in Terrell, Texas. We have on, in the chambers, District 3 Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. We have District 4 Stephanie Holmes-Thomas. We have District 5 Tim Royce, Mayor Pro Tem, and we have remote Grady Simpson. This time, Grady, would you lead us in invocation, please?
Yes, Mayor. May we bow our heads, please? Oh, Father God, we come giving you thanks once again. We pray for this council, that you will guide us and lead us in all our ways. Be the light to our pathway, that we might lead our city to the right way and the right direction. We pray for our citizens, continue to protect us and guide us and keep us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Our next item on the agenda is Mayor and Council Community Recognition and Events. And as this is Constitution Week, we have with us in chamber the Daughters of the American Revolution, some members, if y'all would please come forward. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read, but before we do that, would you please introduce yourselves to the council, so they know who you are? If you'll speak up to the mic, yeah, just come in front, it'll be fine.
I'm Cynthia Good, the Vice Regent of the DAR Chapter, Kingsport Chapter of Terrell.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm Stacy Browning, the Honorary Regent for the Kingsport Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution.
Cool, thank you.
I'm Crystal Purcell, the Secretary of the Kingsport Chapter of Daughters of American Revolution.
Hi, I'm Catherine Budge, I'm Corresponding Secretary.
And I'm Suzie Hagler, and I'm just a member.
Yes. Well, thank y'all so much for being with us here. I have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Terrell, it reads, whereas September the 17th, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial, memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issues of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitutional Week, now therefore I, Rick Carmona, by the virtue vested in me as Mayor, and on behalf of the Terrell City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September the 17th to the 23rd as Constitutional, Constitution Week. In the City of Terrell, I urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideas that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, by visibly protecting the freedoms guaranteed us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness hereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the City of Terrell, Texas, to be affixed this, the 21st day of September 2021. So I'll come down and give this to you. Counsel, if y'all'd like to join me in a photo. Which campus was it, do you know?
You don't want me to ruin the picture, do you?
It's alright.
Alright, our next item on the agenda is to adopt the minutes, so discuss and consider minutes from the regular city council meeting on September the 14th of 2021. Counsel, have y'all had a chance to review? And ladies, it's boring for the rest of the evening, so if y'all want to exit, that would be fine. You bet. Thank y'all for being here. I know, right? I knew you would. So, adoption of the minutes, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the meeting minutes of the regular city council meeting on September 14, 2021.
We have a motion for Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, District 3. Is there a second? I have a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed emotional carrier? Our next item on the agenda is, item seven, to hear remarks from visitors, do we have any? There are none? So we'll move forward to item number 7.1, yes? Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, let the record reflect that the Councilwoman did invoke privilege, and we want that a part of the record. Our next item on the agenda is discuss and consider, City of Terrell FY '20 audit. I think we have Clayton Rogers with Patello Brown and Hill, but Mike, are you going to handle this?
Yeah, Jay and I are going to intro a little bit, and then we're going to let Clayton hit home runs during his presentation. I'm just going to give you the little intro of, boy, it has been a tough, tough year to nail this baby down. And kudos to Jay and his team, and to Clayton and his team for doing so. COVID is just a bad time to try to do your city audit. So, God bless finishing it, and we appreciate that very much. I will say that what you're seeing tonight is about 99.99% the same as the draft material that was in your council packet for two straight times, about 60 days ago. But we like the audit firm to be 100% done and 100% ready, so there's no big excitement or news or big change from the last time that you saw the exact same numbers. And that is why we did have it on the agenda for action tonight. But with that, I'll hand it over to Jay.
Alright, Jay, so let's hear the .1%.
There you go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Patello Brown and Hill, the normal firm that we've been using the past few years, completed the audit, as Mike Sims was stating. You're normally used to seeing John Manning here presenting before you all on the audit, but today we have Clayton Rogers. He's just been essential in pulling this audit across the finish line, and I really appreciate all his hard work and all the staff at Patello Brown and Hill. So I'll let him come before you all and present the audit.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Mr. Rogers, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, Jay, and thank you, Mike. I do appreciate a little bit of hyping up, because I was not looking forward to having to follow the Constitution. But yes, as Jay said, my name is Clayton Rogers. Pardon. I'm an audit manager with Patello Brown and Hill, based out of Waco, and I'm here to discuss and present the fiscal year 2020 annual financial report, talk about the audit and the results of the audit, and answer any questions that you may have about the financial statements or anything related to the audit. So, spoiler alert, everything was good. It's always, there's always that drumroll moment, but in your packet, which I believe you have digitally, a couple of files that we'll be going over. I have hard copies here. The first one I'll just mention very, very briefly is the required communication with governance. This is a couple of page letter that, for us, when we're doing our audit, we are required, under professional standards, to communicate a number of things to you in your capacity as the governing body. And there's a number of things that we would be required to tell you. For example, if we found significant problems with internal control, if we found that significant laws or regulations pertaining to the financial statements had been violated, some of those types of things, we would be required to disclose to you here. Again, spoiler alert, we had none of those things, and so this letter, if you were here last year, is going to read 99% the same thing, and the other 1% is probably the dates. So we do appreciate Mike's staff, and Jay, and all of Jay's staff, and everyone else at the city who we worked with on helping us complete this audit. As Mike said, it was a year. It has, it has been, we've seen cities, counties, throughout the state of Texas, have a lot of challenges. Fortunately, the federal government did extend a six-month extension to all of the statutory deadlines related to the financial statements for these types of things because of how widespread they've been. But at the end of the day, we have finished our audit. And the other thing I would like to touch on very briefly, because it's kind of the, one of the things that you will not have seen throughout the year, is the single audit report. And as a refresher, the single audit report is something that we issue when the city expends more than three-quarters of a million dollars in a year of federal funding. We have to do what's known as a single audit, which is basically a compliance audit over the city's use of federal funds. We don't look at every federal program. There are certain criteria for picking large or potentially risky programs. And we kind of do a deep dive on those to see if there is, if the city has been spending that money appropriately, and has been applying appropriate controls to make sure that it is spent appropriately. So if we'll jump to page 3 in the single audit report. I'm sorry, page 1, sorry. And at the, the, this is our letter describing our procedures related to this single audit. And much like the financial statements, opinion letter, essentially what this letter is saying in layman's terms is describing that management is responsible for complying with everything related to all this, basically the strings that are attached to using federal funds, and that our responsibility is to do the audit and obtain, do procedures and obtain evidence to render an opinion if those funds were spent appropriately. And at the bottom of page 1, you can see that we have rendered what's known as an unmodified opinion over the city's federal expenditures. You will probably be more familiar with the term clean opinion, which means that in our testing over certain programs, we did not find any significant non-compliance or control problems that would be required to be reported. So, clean opinion, good as it gets, no findings, good as it gets. If we jump back to pages 5 and 6, we have what's called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And this simply lists out all of the federal funding that the City of Terrell had, and how much of that funding was spent during fiscal year 2020. Again, we are not only making sure that the numbers that are presented here are materially accurate, we're picking out certain programs based on a certain criteria to do that deep dive. On page 8, you can see which programs that we selected. And they were about halfway down on the page, you can see that we performed audit procedures over the city's Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF expenditures, as well as, for the first time, expenses related to some of the Water Development Board projects. Those are not new to the city for this year, but they had finally gotten to a, the projects had kicked off to enough to where there was a, the dollar amount was large enough that we picked that up in our audit. So again, the single audit report is very straightforward and boilerplate, again, because there were no significant non-compliance or control problems that we would need to report. So moving on to everyone's favorite subject, the annual financial report. If we open that up and then jump to page numeral 1, not Roman numeral 1, but page number 1, if you're in a PDF, it should be about seven or eight pages back. And this is the independent auditor's report. And in plain English, again, what this, what this letter is stating is that management of the city is responsible for these financial statements and everything that's in them. We did help prepare the financial statements, which is very customary with governments, but ultimately, management has taken responsibility that accurate financial reporting is their responsibility. Our responsibility is to audit those financial statements. By performing certain procedures, whether it be confirming bank balances or doing analysis of accounts that changed a lot from year to year, we're performing all these different procedures to render an opinion on if the financial statements are right. And again, I kind of already spoiled myself multiple times. At the top of page 2, you can see our opinion paragraph, which again is a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion, which again, of the four outcomes for the audit, that is the best one. It means that everything that's in these financial statements that's behind here is something that we feel is free of material misstatement, that there is nothing that is wrong or missing that would affect your decision-making as counsel. So, again, just to recap, the results of the audit. We performed an audit over the financial statements, clean opinion, no findings. And we performed a single audit of compliance over federal funds, clean opinion, no findings. So, from there, I would like to just highlight a few specific things in the financial statements, just a few highlights here. Generally speaking, when you're reading this report, it starts very broad at the beginning, and it narrows down the further back you go. So the first few pages, I will jump over them, is the management's discussion and analysis. That's a very broad brush analysis of some of the big changes that happened for fiscal year 2020, many of which you're, have been, all become very familiar with. A fund balance in the general fund, the public-private partnership fund, all did increase. Net position for the water and sewer fund increased. Part of, a lot of the root causes of that were, as we saw with, even despite COVID, sales tax revenues continued to increase, property tax revenues have increased. And for these first couple of set of statements, I will touch on the city's pension liability, just very, very briefly. If you'll jump to page 10, page 10, at the bottom page number on the PDF. This is the statement of net position. As I said, the-
Can I just say, so everybody's on the correct page? In your council packet, if you're searching, this is Agenda Item, page 38. Just to make sure everybody has a moment to see, am I on the right page? No, it's Agenda Item, page 38. I think I got more pages in my packet than neither. Alright, that's fine. If, if it says Statement of Net Position on top, and Page 10 on the bottom, very first number under assets says $20,775,167? Alright. That's fine.
I feel like I should have probably just brought a laptop.
Oh, you're good.
That's okay, that's okay, you're good.
Okay, so, as I mentioned, the financial statements start more broad, and they get narrower as you go to the back. If you wanted to drill down on a specific number or a specific fund, it gets more detailed as you go along. These first two financial statements, the statement of net position and the statement of activities, these are what we call government-wide financial statements. This is presenting everything related to the City of Terrell in one balance sheet and one income statement. The governmental activities is everything from the public-private partnership fund, the general fund, of course, the EDC. And then business-type activities is water, sewer, and the airport fund. And one thing I'd like to point out, because it's something that, as Mike said, this is not way, way different than what you have been seeing, reported to you throughout the year. This information is going to track very closely to that if you went back and looked at it. So it's not like, as part of our audit, they were, management was saying cash was one thing, and then we came in and said, no, 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 it needs to be something that's wildly different. That was not the case. What we will point out is something that does generally only get adjusted once a year, is the city's pension liability. You can see that at the bottom of page 38, or page 10, the one that you were just on. You can see down at the bottom that the pension liability was about $6.7 million at the end of fiscal year 2020. And that was down from about 10 or 11 million last year. TMRS's assets have done well, and I suspect they probably did even despite the pandemic, although that number is going to fluctuate up and down somewhat. If you were to drill back behind these statements into the notes to the financial statements, it spends an exhaustive period of time talking about TMRS plan. And one of the things that the actuary does disclose is that the plan is solvent. They do expect that even if this liability is going to go up and down year to year, the TMRS plan in Austin is going to be able to pay all future benefits. That they're, that is what they're projecting. So no issues with the pension liability. As I mentioned, on the next page, we have the statement of activities. If you're looking at the page numbers at the bottom, it's 12 and 13. I'm assuming it's 40 and 41.
30, 30, 31.
Oh, did we decide it was 28 a minute ago?
We have some conflicting information, but that's okay. So it needs to say 12 at the bottom of yours.
Okay, yes.
Okay, that's the important part.
Okay, so this, this statement is one-
Yeah, mine's showing 30 of 100. Come look, go ahead, I'm sorry, we're just-
Oh, not a problem. This is one of these statements, I will just kind of mention it very, very briefly. It doesn't look very good in a PDF, because it's kind of supposed to cross two pages. But you can see, pretty much at the bottom, the net position of the government-wide financial statements. On the very next page, on page 13, you can see the overall net position increased by just short of $5 million. A big chunk of that was related to the pension liability going down so much. And what that means is that all of the activities of the city, when you include pensions, when you include its long-term debt, its purchases of fixed assets, when we put together one full accrual set of statements, the city's financial position went up by $5 million, which is certainly right along track with what you've been seeing out of the general fund, which is on the very next page. Page 14 at the bottom of the page. After the entity-wide financial statements, it will, it begins to break things down, like those, each of those two columns, governmental and business-type activities, there's several sets of financial statements for each of those. And there's even more financial statements in the back that break things out even more granular. I'd like to point out, not going into painstaking detail, but pointing out the fund balance of the general fund, just as I'm sure you've been seeing throughout the year, at the bottom of page 14, you can see that unassigned fund balance in the general fund did end at around 4.4 million, which we can see on the next set of statements, starting on page 17, that that was a pretty sizable increase, when all was said and done, about a $1.3 million increase to fund balance in the general fund. Across the board, the EDC's fund balance did decrease because of planned expenditures, but overall, the city's fund balance was up, net position was up. And a lot of the, they were expecting that there might be revenue shortfalls or all of these, kind of the sky's falling scenarios, related to city's revenues because of COVID. But fortunately, a large, large portion of governments in Texas did not have that problem. And so, revenues were not wildly affected, sales taxes were up, property taxes were up. None of the federal grants just magically disappeared, which are all very, very good things. Beyond that, beyond these statements, a couple of pages back, we have the proprietary fund financial statements, which are on, the balance sheet is on pages 22 and 23. And here you can see the water sewer funds net position, and on the next page, that it had increased by about $1.3 million as well. And going back, behind these financial statements are the notes to the financial statements, which pretty much any number or any fund that you'd like to know more detailed information about, you can find some narrative and some additional disclosure back in there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about anything specifically. I won't bore you to death by going through all of it, unless someone would appreciate that level of detail.
I have a question, only because Mike Sims loves explaining numbers. So I'm going to ask it, and then one of you can decide who's going to take that ball. On page number 10 of the financial report, where there's a line item that says retiree health, is that truly people that have retired, that's our liability for this fiscal year? And maybe that's a Sims question.
The short answer is no. So just like the pension liability, that retiree health liability is one of these actuarially accrued numbers. Basically, what, what the city did is that they engage, because they're required to report this number, the city engages with an actuary who looks at what the city is offering, like, for retirees, are you paying all of their premiums when they retire? Are you giving them a flat stipend? And I think of it like a slot machine, like you stick certain information in, pull the handle, and the actuary spits out this number, that this is what we think the cost is going to be in the future. That's not a number that the city's actually going to have to pay at any given point in time. It's simply a best guess as to what that number is right now. It's simply a best guess as to what that number is right now.
Is that a guess on what that number could be in a single fiscal year?
Probably not a single fiscal year, because it would be based upon, does, when someone retires, are they going to elect to stay on health insurance? Will they stay on it for 20 years? Will they pass away after 10? And the actuaries use some standardized data to try and-
To me, the best way to understand the number is the history of the federal rule associated with this. So the Government Accounting Standards, GASB, which I never remember the name of that entity. But anyway, so the Government Accounting Standards Board, what they decided to do was to say, look, there's a handful of entities nationwide that got themselves into trouble by having pension systems or healthcare systems for retirees that just were very financially insecure, right? So they looked at that, and they said, man, there's, there's some, there's some state and some local pension systems and retiree healthcare systems going bankrupt, and having major, major problems. So the Government Accounting Standards Board decided that what they would do is to say, okay, we're going to have a new rule, and we're going to try to have a standardized system for reporting this stuff nationwide. And so one number is always, hey, what's like one year of snapshot, right? So there's that note there that says, due within one year, okay? And then there's another note down there that is due in more than one year. So you might look at that as saying, well, now I've looked all into the future, and I've added up all of these costs that I'm going to have sometime in the future, and I'm asking myself, is my retiree system overall balanced? And it either is or it isn't. So if you go to, I'll just throw California under the bus, because they've had a lot of problems with this. You go to California, and they're using a retirement system that was not putting enough money in upfront for decades, then these numbers look awful. When you're dealing with TMRS, and you're dealing with some of the state systems that we've got in place, as well as our own system, they were always well-funded. And so they end up looking like very healthy numbers. So I don't know if that history helps or not, but that's kind of how I think about these numbers. So when they're showing me, what's the one here, $3.4 million? Well, what they're trying to communicate there is, over the course of all of your retirees' future healthcare needs, then if they, if you sum all of that up for decades into the future, that's the number that you get to.
Oh, I think that's a good statement. And really, one of the best parts of the statement is, hey, due within one year and due in more than one year. So, man, there's a lot of words and there's a lot of numbers, but that one, those few words help out that large number, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and Mike, that was, you hit the nail on the head, that it's, they were trying to make sure that governments were looking at, what benefits are you offering to retirees that could become extremely expensive? I have one county government here in Texas that elected a couple of years ago to cover basically that the employee, or the retiree was only going to have to pay a certain portion of premium increases, so that essentially the county was saying, not only are we going to pay your premiums, at this level, we're going to keep covering the cost of increases. Well, as we all know, health and healthcare doesn't get cheaper. And so then subsequently, their OPEB liability has tripled in the last two years. And that's not necessarily cause for alarm now, but what it hopefully is getting them to look at is maybe we need to evaluate what benefits we are offering to our retirees.
Okay, so with that being said, man, this is, this is great. And after six years on council, I'm probably going to pull all of our audits while I've been on council, just kind of stack them against each other, because certainly, TMRS numbers have gone up, and I'm just, I would like to see the progression of where they've gone.
And I'm going to just warn you, when you do that, what you see is that it's hard to track those numbers year over year, because what you got is variation in the age cohort of our employees, which changes, you know, when you draw that back into net present value of those costs, you're going to have variations there. And then, as Clayton mentioned, you're going to have annual variations in how did TMZ or the stock market and the investment portfolio at TMZ do in that particular year. So some of the variations is going to be stuff that's under our control. Some of the variations is going to be state, national trends, and TMZ portfolio changes. So that's a, that's a big set of numbers to unpack, yeah.
I will save you a little bit of effort, you don't have to go pull six PDFs. Pages 53 through 58 of this report has trend data for the three plans. The TMZ pension plan, there is a small portion of the supplemental death benefits fund of TMZ that's considered in OPEB or other post-employment benefits. And then the retiree health that you were looking at. It shows essentially some inputs to that liability and how it's changed over time. You can see on pages 53 and 54 that the pension liability has been like a seesaw. It seems like it goes up by a couple million, then it goes down by a few million, and it just seesaws back and forth. However, if you looked at page 58, 58 at the bottom of the page, you'll see that that total OPEB liability has been hovering around 4 million, 4.1 million the last couple of years. And I would say probably the most important takeaway from that is that it's not spiraling upward.
No, that is, that is good. So, and, you know, I'd be glad for already having the numbers in there, because, yeah, that, that does help to see where the trend is. So I'm glad you guys put that in every year.
I'd like to take credit for it, but the GASB makes us.
Wonderful. Alright, does anybody have any more questions or comments? Thank you very much, I appreciate the presentation, you did well.
Absolutely, thank you, and I appreciate Mike and Jamarcus and all of the city's staff for helping us out and being very forthcoming. And we do appreciate all of you giving us the opportunity to do the city's audit this year.
Thank you. Yep, so that was item number 7.1. Counsel, we need a motion to accept the City of Terrell FY '20 audit. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the City of Terrell fiscal year 2020 audit.
We have a motion from Mayroni Velazquez, Deputy Mayor, Pro Tem District 3. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Grady Simpson, District 2. Is there any further discussion?
Discussion, Mayor?
Yes.
Just to let you know, I'm going to abstain, just because I have not fully digested the 100-page audit. So I am going to abstain from voting.
Dearly noted. Council District 5, Tim Royce, Mayor Pro Tem, was going to abstain. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is 7.2, discuss and consider a final plat for crossroads at Terrell Phase 1B, Lot 3R, Block 7, being 2.3387 acres out of the John C. Hale survey, abstract number 202. City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas. This is Mr. Fenner.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Excuse me, before, you do have a plat for crossroads, excuse me. Did you read the right one? We're on seven.
7.2, yes.
Sorry, I didn't flip my right tab. The final plat for crossroads, Lot 1B, it's 3R and 4. It is the, a total of 2.3 acres. The property is going to be used as a restaurant site. You guys may have heard it, heard about it. There was talk that we were holding them up, but this has been a process that started with them, and then they stopped and put it on hold, and then came back to us. So it is going to be adjacent to Olive Garden. It's going to be utilized as the Texas Roadhouse. And so they've met all the standards, P&amp;Z voted 6-0, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. So again, this was a 6-0 vote from our P&amp;Z. Is there any discussion?
If approved, what is the timeline for this project, the next step?
They already have their stuff in, the permit's good, so it's up to them.
Okay.
A question, just my normal question is, Mr. Fenner, are there any oddities with the plat that just doesn't meet our standards?
Uh, no, sir, it's, it's crossroads, and so we see a lot of different things happen out there. But we knew that this, they actually submitted a lot more detail than they needed to on the project, and, and early on, probably six months ago or so. And then when we revisited the final plat process, it was, it was pretty simple. So they've done everything that they can do.
Okay, great.
Alright, done with discussion, is there a motion?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the final plat as stated in item 7.2.
We have a motion from Tim Royce, Mayor Pro Tem, District 5. Is there a second? I have a second, Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is 7.3, conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider a final plat for the Tanger addition, Lot 1A, Lot 1, and Lot 1B. Block A being 35.44 acres out of the rent and sell survey, abstract number 443. City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, FP 21-10. Mr. Fenner.
Commander, Counsel, this is a replat. We do this, this particular property when we, the commercial is just a public hearing. No publication, no property notice, but that's how we handle it. What has happened here, and you can see on the plat, that they're basically just splitting it down to where there's the building itself, and then the additional 12 acres. So there's 35 acres in total. This is basi- basically done for financial purposes and refinancing the property. There's no development taking place at this time, and when there is development that does take place, or planning that takes place, we'll essentially start the process over. And so you'll see the construction plat that'll be submitted, and we'll be dealing at that time probably with some access issues with the frontage road and some drainage issues, and redoing some things there. We'll let you know that we, we, you know, we are trying to talk with them and, and work with them on, on utilization of that property. We think it's, it's a, it's a great piece of land for, in a business for, for the City of Terrell. And so we hope to, to figure out a way to really optimize the use and the development potential for that, that particular piece of property, so. The P&amp;Z voted 5-0 vote. We did have Mr. Plant, he had had to recuse himself, because he works, he is now on our P&amp;Z, as you know. And he recused himself from the vote, so we recommend that you approve it after your public hearing.
Alright, so this is the area chopped at Terrell. Again, probably just for financial reasons, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the public hearing. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak on behalf of this item, either for or against? We have none, so we'll close the public hearing. And Counsel, what's your pleasure on item 7.3?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the plat as described in 7.3.
I have a motion from Tim Royce, Mayor Pro Tem, District 5. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Grady Simpson, District 2. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion will carry. Our next item on the agenda is 7.4, discuss and consider a construction plat for Magnolia Estates, Lot 1 through 27, Block A, Lot 1 through 14, Block B. 41 residential lots, five common areas, being 8.9722 acres out of the W. Fogelman survey, abstract number 164, Terrell, City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, CP 21-04. This is Mr. Fenner.
Yes, sir, Mayor, Counsel, this is the Magnolia Estates. You saw this come before you a few times through the PD process. Located off McColsky Drive, Rose Street, 34th Night Area. The project before you now is the actual construction plat, conforming to the actual PD. We did include some of that information in, in the packet. We did purchase, I think I mentioned this before, we did purchase, the city did purchase a little piece of land off Jerry Drive, so we could make sure that we had safe ingress on that area there, the way the, the street was at the curvature there. Our engineer wasn't real excited about that, so that actually turned out to be a good process. We got that taken care of, and we needed to use it for drainage, too. So that was taken care of. They were wanting to move fast, and we said, hey, we'll, we'll go as fast as you guys can submit your information. They did, they submitted their engineering plans for the construction plat, so we're good with it. You know that they have several com- common areas, are their, their PD. And so the next steps are to submit the HOA documents that are going to be taken care of the, the, these common areas, or create whatever they're going to do with the Public Improvement District, if they're going to do that. They'll submit that, they'll build these improvements, or they'll put the letter of credit up for it before the final plats for approval, before they can sell it.
And we've seen this before, last year, right?
Yes.
You saw it in the concept? Yes.
You saw it in a side plan for the plan development. It's a plan development SF6, it's 6,000 square foot minimum lots. And it'll basically follow the standards of the SF6.
Okay. Alright, Counsel, is there any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
There are a good amount of common areas, which I think is great. Are there sidewalks in this development, or is it just focused on more green space towards the?
There are sidewalks and Terrell pieces, too. They'll actually have some areas that will be located on the side of the sidewalks that are kind of shade structures for sitting area, too, so.
So we're not allowing development without sidewalks, are we?
No, sir.
I didn't think so, okay. Any further discussion?
You won't see the full construct, the civil plans in your package. You're going to see the construction plat. What we, we do have is the actual civils that are approved by the engineer before they actually-
Okay. Okay.
So you can, if, if you remember, they had, they had a created, in the plan development, they had the development standards that went along with that PD, because there were a few things changed and added to, and there were trade-offs with the amenities and stuff.
Right. Yeah. Does anybody have any, okay.
For point of clarity, if you look at Northside Edition Exhibit B, which is the ordinance, then there's a set of regulations related to all of these, and this is all stuff that was already attached to the PD ordinance. And so, already approved, and just being reflected again here, is a set of rules where you would say, okay, the minimum lot area is 6,000 square feet, the minimum lot width is that 55.58, but they're all generally right at 60, I think, is what they ended up with.
We had to come back, because there was, there were two lots that couldn't hit the 60, and so we went ahead and dropped that 60-foot minimum to the 55.
Okay. And then there's a lot depth of 100 feet, front yard setback's 25 feet, side yard setback, which I think may have been your question, is 6 feet. So that's going to be, I got a fence, I got 6 feet, and then I got a house, and then that repeats on the other side. Rear yard setback is 25 feet.
Right, and then the front entry, we have 20 feet from the sidewalk, for, for the garage, the other part of that. And again, this was the, these were the PD standards. We had a tree survey and, and some replacement, we had a combination, character elevation combination, we had the way they were going to plant the trees. And we also had where the garages needed to be located, one foot behind the door, or four feet behind the most extended elevation. So with porches with four feet of stone columns- So with porches with four feet of stone columns, uh, with four feet of stone columns will be interpreted as the elevation. So, uh, so yeah, there were development standards that were placed in here that's all approved. And that actually went back and amended the P D because we had to change that at one time. So what's happened, once that's done and the entitlement's done on the property, they have to start plating the property. And so they submit this construction plat, which are all the engineering plans for the drainage and the public improvements for the sidewalks and so forth. And there's a lot of review on the engineering technical side at that point. But what you're really going to see is just the construction plat laid out. You're not going to see. Now, we have them available for you to see, but you don't want that full packet, you know?
Okay.
This is a two-garage door?
Yes, ma'am.
For each one?
Yes, ma'am.
It'd probably have two small cars versus kind of a medium or large vehicle?
One of Royce's trucks, maybe.
I don't think so.
Yeah, whatever, they'll have to have, they'll have to have a two-car garage classification. So, uh, you know, whether they park one big SUV in there and one off, off the street.
It, it's, it's a defined two-car garage, though.
I'd say what a, what a good add to the neighborhood right across from the police station.
Yep.
Right? So they, they've got a piece of property that's kind of, uh, surrounded by homes and they really worked it and made it work. So, yeah, man, really good feel. Is it, um, and this is in the weeds, but is it a, a single home, home builder that is doing these? How, how is that process?
As far as, as right now, yes.
Okay.
So, um, if you look, and I believe that location is there, is, um, Bill, we call him Bill.
Okay. Bill's great. Thank, thank you for all that definition.
I'm sorry. He's done this before, um, so, too, but yes, right now, that's the case.
Okay. No, I, I think it's a good feeling.
Okay. Uh, Council, what do you want to do? This is a discussion, consider.
Mayor, I move to approve the construction plat for Magnolia Estates, um, as presented in item seven point four.
I have a motion from Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem District Three. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Grady Simpson, District Two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry. Our next item on the agenda is seven point five. Discuss and consider City Hall Roof Repair. This is, uh, Public Works Glenn Caldwell. I don't see.
Mayor, I'm going to be playing the role of Glenn Caldwell tonight, and, uh, Glenn and I have been communicating on this quite a bit. This is really the same presentation Glenn gave to you at your last meeting. Um, I think that Dawn is going to pop it up on the screen for me. Uh, if you recall, we were frightened that we were going to have to spend some money immediately on, uh, with, with lots of zeros behind that, uh, at our, one of our previous meetings. Uh, we talked about during our budget retreat, you know, do we need to do a standing seam metal roof? Do we need to redo the whole thing? Um, at, at last week's council meeting, we talked about the idea that, you know what? We've got an opportunity to do what I'm going to call, uh, limping and to do it effectively. Um, uh, we, we had a conversation also about doing an agreement with a architect so that we can develop more of a long-term plan. I'd say that I'm still working on that with Randall Scott, who's the architect who did the, um, revamp of the Trinity Valley Community College site. Uh, but that's not tonight's item. Uh, that's, that's a thing that we'll do next. Uh, so the second page here gives you all of the, uh, items that, uh, Glenn talked about last time. I'm not going to try to beat this up or pretend that I'm the expert in it, but I'll tell you, uh, basically the idea is that you've got some rusting on the metal deck. Uh, you've got some concrete that's been water damaged. We're going to take everything off so that we can get into it and get, uh, a, a little bit of repairs of the concrete and, uh, make sure that we get some of the, uh, treatment done to the rusted section. And then we're going to put the right surface on top of all of that. So, uh, we think that that's going to be around, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars. Glenn had the very specific number of seven-one-eight-zero-four and three cents. Uh, we're going to round that maybe up to seventy-five thousand for a, a not-to-exceed number. I did write a little bit of a action item up for, uh, uh, Council. Uh, our recommendation is let's move forward on this thing quickly. Let's get this done quickly. Make sure that we're draining our roof correctly. And there's definitely just going to have to be a long-term, uh, plan put in place. And, uh, at a meeting here soon, we'll bring you a, a little bit of a conversation about an architect who can help us out with more of a long-term plan.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it. We've, uh, visited this before. Any, uh, comments? Hearing none. Uh, Stephanie would give a motion.
I'm going to approve City Manager to enter to a roof repair contract with M C Care Construction, minimum amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
We have a motion from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District Four. Is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, Grady Simpson, District Two. Uh, is there any further discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
I would like publicly to say that, uh, I'm a little bit worried about the, um, the project. Uh, at first, it was a really big project and now it's a really scaled-down project. It, it may hold muster or pass water, uh, but if it doesn't, uh, I'm certainly going to come back next spring and tell you.
Oh, no. No, I, I agree. I thi- I think what happened was they, they're working with a contractor that's done workforce before and was able to get a good pricing. So I'm, I'm confident that we're going to be pleased with it. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes.
I think we can get ten years out of this, maybe. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any further, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Have, uh, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is, um, discuss and consider Resolution Number One Zero Six Zero, updating the final actual policy manual. This is Mr. Sims.
So Mayor and Council, we annually adopt a, a financial plan. Uh, we did a handful of edits to the financial plan based on recommendations from our financial advisor, Jason Hughes, in June. Uh, so right now, we're working on a copy, uh, from June. Uh, we, uh, suggest to amend it again, uh, as we talked about during our budget, uh, retreat and our budget workshops. Uh, we are trying to slowly ratchet up our automobile allowance for our directors who, um, um, uh, travel with their own personal vehicle around town uh, to meetings in Dallas County, Rockwall County, Van Zandt County, and, um, Henderson County and Ellis County. That's the range where if you're using your personal vehicle, uh, you don't get a reimbursement from the City of Terrell. And so, uh, as we do that, uh, we originally had a recommendation of six hundred dollars per pay period for that. Uh, that saves us time and trouble trying to track individual mileage of individual driving by folks, uh, all, uh, all around. Um, uh, we didn't, uh, ever want to make it up to the six hundred dollars per pay period. We started out at four hundred dollars per pay period. This year, we're recommending an adjustment of that up to five hundred dollars per pay period. And that prevents us from having to do individual mileage reimbursement for the folks using personal vehicles. So that's a quick summary of that item, and, uh, we did include this in your, uh, annual budget.
Okay, Council. Anybody have any questions? We talked about it at a retreat, um, and determined an amount. Mike came back with the amount. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion on item seven point six?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve, uh, Resolution Ten Sixty, uh, updating our financial policy.
We have a motion from, uh, Tim Royce, Mayor Pro Tem District Five. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Grady Simpson, District Two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next item is, uh, item seven point seven. Discuss and consider Resolution Number One Zero Six One, updating the City of Terrell Employee Handbook. Mr. Sims.
So Mayor and Council, again, this is an item that came out of your budget retreat. One of the things we wanted to do was to enhance our benefits related to tuition reimbursement. Uh, again, talked about a lot and tried to come up with a policy that made, uh, more sense than what we currently have and provide a little bit, uh, larger of a benefit. Um, uh, so I'll take you through it, and, uh, this is, again, it's Resolution Ten, uh, Sixty-One. And right after the resolution in your packet, you'll see something that starts on the top there with Chapter Twenty-Two, Employee Benefits. It lists Section Seven, Professional Growth. There's already a section in there related to city-initiated, uh, courses. And that's, uh, something we're going to now number seven point one, just so we're a little bit more clear about the, uh, difference here. And so, um, uh, the, uh, seven point one says city-initiated courses and, uh, goes through, uh, that material. And then Item Seven Point Two says employee-initiated courses and walks you through a little bit of, uh, that material. Uh, basically, the only change we've got going here is that it is a, uh, now, right now, today, a C will get you a fifty percent reimbursement. Um, and, uh, we're going to leave that alone. And, uh, we're going to change the policy so that an A or a B will get you a one-hundred percent reimbursement. Then the only other change, uh, from the last time we talked about this, we did allow, allow, add a lot of policy minutia. Uh, and then we also, um, talked last time around about, well, uh, we nicknamed this the clawback provision, right? And you see this in some of our development agreement contracts where we say, hey, if you do this, we're going to, um, uh, clawback, uh, some of the money we gave you. And so, uh, the clawback provision is sort of the last sentence there, and it's really the only change since the last time you saw it. It says, "Any employee separating from the city within three months of receiving any tuition reimbursement under, uh, Section Seven Point Two shall repay the full amount of such reimbursement received within, uh, that three-month, uh, period prior to separation." So basically, the idea is you've got to ask for your reimbursement within sixty days of finishing the class. You get your reimbursement after that period. Uh, then if you decide to separate, uh, from, uh, the City of Terrell, um, uh, within that three-month period, we're going to ask, uh, for our, um, funds back. Um, we've, we, we settled on the three-month period because that seems like sort of the semester-by-semester decision-making here. I don't want to be two semesters past and have to go track all that down. Uh, we felt like, uh, this was a, a little bit of a tough, but not being, uh, unwieldy for our employees.
Okay. Anybody have any comments? We discussed this again.
I do, uh, and this is both for Mike and, and Legal. So if we move to approve the, uh, this, uh, resolution, uh, this would go into effect, uh, tonight. Therefore, anybody taking any sort of fall class would have to start this process, let's say, tomorrow in order to request reimbursement for their fall classes.
So that's a great question. Um, uh, we're improving in this policy, our, um, upfront requirements. Uh, but I don't think it's fair to try to hold anybody to that. I don't have anybody with assigned authorization to go do a class this particular semester who's off-base, right? Uh, because they've generally spoken verbally with their supervisor and made sure that they're taking a class that makes sense and is, is all buttoned down. Uh, we are creating a little bit more paperwork here. I, I think we can, we can phase that paperwork in for the spring semester. I don't think I need to impose that, uh, on, on, uh, the employees at this time. Uh, so yes, we would make sure that anybody taking a class in the fall semester, uh, they don't get dragged down by that little topic, uh, for the spring. Uh, but they can go ahead and proceed and get, if they get an A or a B, uh, they can get a hundred percent reimbursement. And if they get a C, they'll get the fifty percent reimbursement.
We need to have specific language when we read, um, to make it available?
No, no, no. Just, uh, it's written to be effective immediately. If I look at Resolution, uh, Ten Sixty-One, resolution shall be effective immediately after its passage. And the phasing in of all of the paperwork, that's, that's a standard staff function. Right.
Hey, Rick, uh, the comment is, and maybe for Mike also, um, man, I, I think it's a good program. Uh, I think you've added some stuff to it that we asked for. Um, just to make sure that we have, always have good, um, good hold of the program. Um, I'm going to ask for two things. Uh, one of them would be, it can be approved right now by a department head or city manager. Um, so if it is approved by a department head, I would also like the city manager to be notified from that department head. Right? It's just another step. And also, it does not address if a department head is seeking reimbursement. Um, I certainly don't want, and, and certainly, that's not a good, that's not a, that's not a common practice, but right now, a department head, in theory, could approve their own.
No, that's not the way, um, we, we, you got to manage by the spirit of what it's written as well. So no, we, we would not operate it in that fashion. Um, the way that we do it is that, um, I, um, have my fleet of folks that I manage. Uh, so that's going to be Dora and Allison and, you know, the front staff up here. Um, I would need to approve anything from Mike Smith. He's really your employee, but I would say yes or no on his stuff. Uh, same thing with Dawn, and then the department heads would come through me. And then it's really the department heads who need to be approving, uh, their own constituent employees. It's just part of normal conversation around here. We're not an employer of a thousand. We're an employer of two hundred. It's just normal conversation for Charles will say, hey, I've got these two people taking these classes. Okay, that's great. That makes sense. So there's no, there's no end run. So, and no, and, uh, a, a department head cannot approve their own stuff, yeah.
So, you know, in, in the organization I work for, um, do you have the, should I, and, uh, do we have a, uh, one more level? Of what, right, what education or, um, assistance is being provided?
Sure, this is long-term best practice, right? This is, this is not just Timmy Ronnie Maxims, right? This is for Council, um, five years and ten years down the line. Um, so, um, while, while I know that, um, certainly it's all top-of-mind today, and I really do value that comment and say, man, I really do like the notification. It's, it is just a, it's a layer of protection, I feel. And, and certainly, a department head shouldn't be, and, and it's not written in the spirit of a department head would. But I like legal certainty, and legal certainty would.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that if you, if you feel like that's an important policy element, my comment for you would be, um, why don't we just have a, um, uh, little statement in there that says the H R director will provide an annual report on this topic? And, uh, that makes everything real easy to track and follow, and nobody gets lost on, gee, I didn't know so-and-so in the water department was taking that class. Um, so a little annual reporting requirement tagged onto the end of this thing. Uh, I think that might be the flavor of what you're looking for there.
And can, can, uh, for Legal, can, uh, Council add that to the motion? And it be effective?
Yes, it can. Uh, it would have to be, uh, put in the employee handbook. It's not a part of the resolution. You would have to, probably, if, uh, if that's something that the Council wants in the, uh, in the handbook, we would probably, uh, need to redo the motion to, with the resolution to include that leg, as God would say. Uh, or you can approve this resolution tonight, and if you want to come back later and add additional language to it, you could do it in a later.
What, what do you want to do? Uh, well, Council?
My question is, is, is a? I'm, I'm going to write it for you right now, if you don't mind. Yeah.
Okay. That is fine. Now, Mike, now what you said, it doesn't exactly, it does not, um, it does not address a department head approving their own.
I'm, I'm going to ask the councilmen to give us enough credit that we know, you know, we, we, we just would never do something like that.
Well, how about if we do this?
I just.
All right. So let's, let's, uh, move and then improve, right? So we can move on this to get it done now.
Yes.
And then at our next, uh, re- next year, include the language in a resolution or at a later date.
That sounds good, Mayor.
Okay.
That sounds good.
But in the meantime, let's get this, get it the way that needs to be, uh, said so that there's no confusion here. Good discussion. Um, thank y'all. Hey, good discussion.
There's a variety of ways we could do this. Uh, one of the things that the city manager suggested, which I think is a good one, that might, uh, have the H R director report on an annual basis about that type of thing.
Great discussions. Anybody else?
Uh, guys.
Let's workshop this later. Yeah, come on. Let's get to.
We, 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 we can handle it. We're, we're, we're going to manage it. All right.
It's going to be Dallas, uh, Dallas City Council style where we add to the, uh, questions today.
Yeah, right. No, thank y'all. Hey, that's a good conversation. Thank y'all, hey, that's good conversation, good comments, I appreciate it. Is there, uh, any, anyone else?
Here's the thing, I'm, I'm gonna pass this one off, I just, I just, I like more legal certainty, whether it's for us or for councils down the road. So I'm gonna pass this off, uh, because, uh, I would rather a, uh, it be stated formally. I'm a formal-type person, I, I work in a legal divi- environment. I would rather have more legal clarity, and that, that's my comment. But I won't begrudge council if they move forward, it's just, that's my stance.
All right. So, um, council, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, 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 make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1061.
And there's some language that needs to be included. Council member, is there any objection to, Mayor Ronnie, would you read into the record, please?
Sure, that, uh, the language that will be added to Resolution Number 1061 is that the HR director shall, shall annually provide a report on, uh, the program as described in Resolution 1061.
All right, uh, so there's a motion, and, and addition to, uh, the resolution, some verbiage that needs to be included. That was made by Grady Simpson, District Two. Is there a second? You have a second?
Second.
Have a second from, uh, Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Deputy Mayor, Pro Tem District Three? All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye?
Aye.
So let's do, we have, we have two to one, and one abstained.
One abstention.
Well, Rick can vote.
I know, but I don't have to, it's two to one, right? If, well, uh, any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so we got a two-to-one vote, one abstention, we're good, it passed.
Hold on, you have to pass by three.
You do? Well, then, I vote yea. Your motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, Items 8.1. Greg, do you wanna handle this, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I would advise, uh, the mayor and the council, given that this is the consent agenda, these can all be approved in block, uh.
Okay.
If, if the council.
Any objection to, uh, consent agenda as a whole? All right, go ahead, Greg.
And then we would need, uh, would you like me to read all these, Mr. Mayor?
Just the ordinance number, I think.
Ordinance would be, we would be, uh, second reading on ordinance number 2880, ordinance number 2881, number 2884, 2885, and 2886, all on second reading.
All right. Uh, is there a motion on those items?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve consent agenda, Items 8.1 through 8.5. Here's that, and that's from, uh, Mayor Ronnie Velazquez, Deputy Mayor, Pro Tem District Three. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Grady Simpson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So one nay, I vote aye? Did you say?
He said aye.
You're voting aye, okay.
I'm just late.
All right, so that motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is, um, Received National Incident-Based Reporting System, the NIBRS report for August 2021. Mr. Sims?
That's the, uh, informational report, we just provide that in there. If you've got follow-up questions for Chief of Police or myself, just, uh, let me or Dora know, and we'll, we'll get your questions answered, but we'd like to have the public disclosure of having that in your, um, agenda packet.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, council, for your work. We're adjourned. Oh, we got something? Huh? Do we have executive session again?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay, I thought we'd done it all. Okay, sorry.
We'll be quick, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna adjourn into executive session in accordance with Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Pending or Contemplated Litigation, Section 551.071, Deliberations Regarding Real Property, and Section 551.087, uh, deliberations regarding Economic Development Negotiations. So if we can just have the council in, right?
Yeah, this is, uh, all night.
Executive, I don't see no red. Okay. Royce. Man, I know, right, yeah, they're, they're hot, I'm sweating, man. I need some water. This time, we're gonna reconvene into regular session and discuss, uh, action, if any, on items discussed in executive session. There are none, we're adjourned.